Today's January 15th, 2021. It's nine o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners to order. Item two, please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all in attendance to our county commissioners meeting. Item three, is any citizen desiring to be heard?
You're free to speak on whatever's going on.
Uh, sure.
I just come in today to speak on behalf of you guys being voted in a board member on my board.
Right.
Uh, John Rambo, I'd like to speak on his behalf.
Okay, we're gonna be getting to, you're from Sooners Park Department.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, sir. Uh, we've got that listed as item thirteen on our, um, on our agenda. Do you have something pressing that you need to get to for the week? Okay, alright.
I think you just wanted to put in a word for it.
Yep, yep, we'll be happy to let you speak when we get to that point and we'll, we'll work through it then. If that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Any other citizen? Going once, twice, okay. Item four, discussion and possible action to approve minutes of January fourth and sixth, 2021.
I'll move with her.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, I have just a little bit of discussion. I really liked the way Troy's changed the minutes up where you, where we've got, um, our agenda item at the top and then the minutes underneath of that. That's really makes it helpful when we're doing searches and that sort of stuff. So, I commend her for the change and she's not here to hear that, but Tracy, if you pass that along, I appreciate it.
Oh, you can bet she's watching.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Forgot. So, I have a motion and a second on approving the minutes of January fourth and sixth. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item five, open sealed bids, 2021-18 for one, use semi truck for district one. Discussion possible action of awarding said bid. What I will ask is that we, we open them, read the bids and then table until our next meeting so we have a chance to go look at whatever's been, been brought forward.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have three bids, um, one from Ruttner's, DND Truck Sales, and Summit Truck Group.
How are you?
Okay, I've got a 2013 Mack Truck, um, bid for fifty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars from... Ruttner's Truck.
Got a 2013 Kenworth T800, uh, ninety-five thousand miles on it, for sixty-six, nine.
Who was that from?
That was from DND. And then a 2013 Freightliner, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three miles, for thirty thousand, five hundred, from Summit.
Is that what we got, is three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, I'll, I'll ask if we table this till our next meeting, uh, till it allows time to go out and look at, uh, the, the equipment that was bid. Alright. Alright, thank you gentlemen. Tracy, I think you need to hang on to those, we'll just need the copies of the bid part so we can go out to where it's, where they're at and look at them. Thank you, man.
You want to look at the bid then?
I would like to, yes.
Just while you're going waiting there.
I'm sorry. Uh, so could you identify yourself?
I'm Pat Ralph with Ruttner's.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Okay, so we finished with item five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, item six, discussion and possible action to approve resolution accepting donation of fourteen hundred tons of rotamil from Tim Husky to District Two, with District Two providing transportation and application of post-rode between State Highway Thirty-three and College, tabled from January sixth, 2021.
I went out and looked at this job, it's gonna take some prep work before we are ready to lay the crushed asphalt, but I would like to accept this and make a motion that we accept it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Alright. Item seven, discussion and possible action to approve resolution establishing Logan County as a constitutional sanctuary for residents of Logan County. Reaffirming that constitutions are formal agreements between we the people, providing governments with limited powers, reserving all other individual rights and liberties to the people, and that the primary duty of all elected officials is to protect those lives, liberties, and properties of the people against all enemies of foreign and domestic. Gentlemen, this, this resolution's been sent out to y'all to look at. The county sheriff and I have been in discussion with it, as far as his part of the resolution as well, uh, reaffirming that. If there's any questions or discussions, just...
Well, I, I've just had some phone calls, people asking why we was doing this because we already have a constitution. I mean, I have no problem with it, but just on her behalf, do we have an elected official or something that don't want to follow the constitution? That was the question I was asked.
Right, so, uh, the way I understand what we're doing today is we're reaffirming that, uh, there, there will be attempts and there have been attempts to establish unconstitutional edicts from various levels of local and state governments and government agencies that, that don't really follow the constitution. And our, this is our statement that we will not support that in Logan County.
So, it wasn't a local county official that was refusing to follow the constitution? We're just making a statement out of it?
I, I, I don't have any specifics. I mean, again, Sheriff Deveraux and I discussed it, not really at length, but back and forth a little bit and with what's going on at the national level and some of the things that people are talking about trying to implement that would probably be against the constitution, uh, we wanted to make this statement. And I encourage, you know, the board to, to, to go along with that, if, if you, if you see so fit to do so.
How about maybe with having some local problem within the counties, so I'm just curious.
There are some folks that would, uh, given the opportunity, that would probably be a little, um, tyrannical with some of their edicts on what they would force businesses to do. And, and that's kind of where I'm at on this is, I, I don't believe it's government's responsibility to tell a business how to run their business. And so, if a business wants to ask people to wear masks, or wants to ask them to wear shoes, or ask them to want to wear shirts, that's their, that's their business. I mean, and so they can, they can do that, but it is absolutely not a government's responsibility and governments have no power to tell a business that they have to do anything.
I, I agree. So. I, I have no problem following the constitution, so I'm gonna do that for you.
I second.
Okay, with the motion and the second, would either one of you two gentlemen like to read the resolution into the minutes, or?
Cody has it.
Cody, we don't want to put you on the spot, if you'd like to read it, you're more than welcome to.
Um, I can read the whole resolution, so.
Okay. Uh, if you'll stop when you get to the sheriff's part and I think we'll let, uh, the sheriff take on responsibility for his own resolution there.
We're on, uh, on the last page there?
Yes. Yeah, it'd be the last page.
Whereas the Board of County Commissioners, Board of Logan County, Oklahoma, is the executive body of county government pursuant to the provisions of Oklahoma, is it forty-two, dash, one, dash, two, whereas each member of the board is required to take an oath of office prior to the assumption of duties as a county commissioner of the county. Whereas the oath of office requires each member of the board to swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma and faithfully and impartially and diligently discharge the duties of the office of the county of commissioners for the county according to law. Whereas the board maintains a strong commitment to all of the rights of people in the county as stated in the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, including but not limited to the provisions of said constitution that are stated below and that are applicable at all times, including but not limited to the declaration of emergencies, including but not limited to the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the board opposes the adoption of laws, ordinances, rules, regulations, restrictions, and other governmental document of legal force and unlawfully infringe upon the rights secured by constitutions. Whereas in recent case of Roman Catholic Diocese of Brooklyn, New York versus Andrew M. Como, Governor of New York, five ninety-two U.S., twenty twenty, the Supreme Court of the United States stated that even in a pandemic, the count, constitution cannot be put away and forgotten. Whereas the rights of said constitution stated below appear to be the most in jeopardy at this particular time in our country's history and that no one should construe the absence of a stated right as protected by the said constitutions to mean that said right is not vigorously supported and protected by the county and its officials and officers. Whereas the first, second, fourth, and tenth amendments of the Constitution of the United States state the following. Amendment one, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peacefully, peaceably, and assemble and to petition the government for redness, redress of grievance. Amendment two, a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of the free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Amendment four, the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated and no warrants shall issue, but upon probable cause supported by oath of affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized. Amendment ten, the powers not delegated to the United States by the constitution nor prohibited by it to the states are reserved to the states respectively, or to the people. Where sections one, 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 two, two, one, two, two, seven, two, twenty-two, two, twenty-six, two, thirty, two, thirty-three, and two, thirty-seven of the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma state the following. One, one, the State of Oklahoma is an inseparable part of the federal union and the Constitution of the United States is the supreme law of the land. One, two, perfect toleration of religious sentiment shall be secured and no inhabitant of the state shall ever be molested in person or property on account of his or her mode of religious worship. Two, one, all political power is inherent to the people and government is instituted for their protection, security, and benefit, and to promote their general welfare. All persons have the inherent right of life, to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness and enjoyment of gains of their own industry, is two, two. Two, seven, no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Two, twenty-two, every person may freely speak, write, or publish his sentiments on all subjects being responsible for the abuse of that right, and no law shall be passed to restrain or abridge the liberty of speech or of the press. Two, twenty-six, the right of the citizen to keep and bear arms in defense of his home, person, or property, or the aid of civil, of the civil power, when therein too legally summoned, shall be prohibited.
Never be.
Never be prohibited. Two, thirty, the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches or seizures shall not be violated. Two, thirty-three, the enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny, impair, or disparage others retained by the people. Two, thirty-seven, to preserve the freedom of Oklahomans to provide their health care, a law or rule shall not compel directly or indirectly any person, employer, or health care provider to participate in any health care system.
It's a letter? Yeah, I, I, I'll read the, the, this next part and then we'll... I'll read mine, yep. Okay, now, now, therefore, the following is hereby resolved by the board. Board and county do hereby commit to stand and defend at all times, whether during a state of emergency or otherwise, the rights and liberties of persons in Logan County is guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma. Logan County is hereby declared to be a constitutional rights sanctuary county. In addition, we enjoin all municipalities, cities, townships, state agencies and departments, and all local government officials operating within the geographic boundaries of Logan County to uphold their oaths and take due care at all times, whether during a state of emergency or otherwise, not to infringe upon the rights and liberties of the persons and individuals in Logan County as provided for in the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma. Review and change if necessary any of their ordinances, rules, regulations, orders, policies, practices, and all government documents of legal force for conformity to said constitutions, and adopt affirmative resolutions, proclamations, or commitments similar to this resolution so stating that their primary reason for being is the protection of rights and liberties of persons and individuals residing in Logan County. So passed and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Logan County, Oklahoma this fifteenth day of January, twenty twenty-one, uh, attested by the Board of County Commissioners of Logan County, Oklahoma. I'll entertain a motion for, uh, adoption.
I'll move it and approve. I second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt said resolution, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion's approved, the resolution's adopted. Sheriff, if you'd like to read your resolution and support?
Uh, I'm gonna read my resolution to support. A proclamation supporting the protection of rights under the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma. Whereas the sheriff of Logan County supports the above resolution adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Logan County, Oklahoma on this day of January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas the sheriff does hereby adopt and incorporate the whereas recitals of the resolution, except the, except the first six recitals that are specific to the Board of Commissioners as part of the proclamation. Whereas the sheriff has taken an oath of office to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma and to faithfully and impartially and diligently discharge the duties of the office of sheriff for the county according to law. Whereas the sheriff maintains a strong commitment to all the rights of the people in the county as stated in the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, including but not limited to the provisions of said constitutions that are stated in the resolution and are applicable, applicable at all times, including but not limited to the declaration of emergencies, including but not limited to the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, therefore, the following proclaimed by the sheriff. The sheriff does hereby support the declaration of Logan County as a constitutional rights sanctuary county. Sheriff does hereby commit to stand and defend at all times, whether during a state of emergency or otherwise, the rights and liberties of the persons and individuals in Logan County as guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, so proclaimed by the Logan County Sheriff's Office this day of January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
You bet.
Alright, any further discussion on item eight, or seven, excuse me? Hearing none, we'll move on to item eight. Discussion and possible action concerning establishment of a method for county residents living in the unincorporated areas of Logan County to petition the Logan County Board of Commissioners to approve golf carts and/or utility vehicle traffic to operate upon specific roads or roadways within the county according to Oklahoma Title Forty-seven Motor Vehicle Section eleven, dash, one thousand, one hundred and sixteen self-propelled or motor-driven cycles, mini box golf carts, altering vehicles, prohibitions and restrictions. Monty, we had this, gentlemen, we've had this on the, our agenda before and we, we tabled it because we didn't have the, enough handouts and enough information, I think, at that time. So, uh, Monty, one of the questions I think I remember you asking had to do with why don't we just go ahead and declare the whole county, you know, with the ability to do that? One of the challenges is, uh, we would have to, if we did that, and we could do that, but we'd have to lower the speed limit on every county road to twenty-five miles an hour. So, wherever we allow golf carts, um, they have to lower the speed limit down to twenty-five miles an hour. That's one of the restrictions in here. And, uh, I, I think, I, I hope Troy sent out the, uh, dialogue between, uh, our ADA and myself, where Lowell talked about what the actual restrictions are and those sorts of things. And, so, one of the questions that I had was that the statute says that the Board of Commissioners can't make the speed limit any lower than thirty miles an hour. And, of course, Lowell said, well, this part of the statute says that you can, so only under these circumstances. But, but we have to make it twenty-five miles an hour wherever it's at. So, this, this first came out from one of our, um, small additions in South County that wanted to allow golf carts in their little housing addition, right? We don't currently maintain the, the roads inside that county, but Lowell said that we don't need, it's still, they're still public roads, uh, they're classified as public roads. So, as long as the HOA buys the signs and, and puts them up, uh, they're still enforceable. And, and so that, that part of it is okay. But, we would need to, they would need to petition the board and then the board would have to declare the streets that they wanted to allow golf carts to travel on, uh, to, to be accessible. So, that would have to be specific to, uh, those roads. Uh, there, there's some other restrictions in here, but I, I think that's the meat of it. It's, it's basically, we'd have to figure out which roads they want, uh, make sure that they understood that they would be, you know, twenty-five miles an hour would be the, the speed limit signs and, and if it's a, um... If a road's that the county is taking on to maintain, I, I think we're probably on the hook to buy the speed limit signs for that. If they're not, if they're, if it's a privately maintained road inside a neighborhood that's open for public traffic, then they, they could buy the signs and, and, and put them up and it would still be enforced under this requirement, the way I understand it. And, there, there's some other, um, other items in this statute that talk about mopeds and, um... Eight, is it ATVs, Sheriff, that is the other part of that?
ATVs.
Yeah, so the ATVs are already addressed by the statute and the, the county really doesn't have the ability to control that because the law, the statute already says they can do it if they have a driver's license. So, we're, we're kind of out of that deal. Mopeds is, uh, is a separate item if we want to come back and address mopeds on county roads. I'm not sure that the board's ever done that before, but, um, that would be something that we would need to understand the safety issues around that. But, at, at this time, I think that we can, um, at least say that we can approve a process to where we can be petitioned to allow this to happen within certain housing additions. Lemon, do you have anything to add?
In reality, I think when they, they created this ordinance, they opened this statute, you know, when they amended it, I, I don't think they took into consideration, uh, you know, the county minimum speed limit on county roads.
Right.
So, in reality, the best way to address this would be to hopefully get this before legislature again and amend it so we don't have to go through all the hassles of changing speed limit signs and stuff like that. You know, there's a lot of people doing it and I can tell you from our, from our perspective, if, if they're doing it responsibly, we're just waving at them and driving on by. We got bigger things to worry about than some of them driving a golf cart on a county road. But, for them to be legal, if you will, obviously, we're gonna have to look for changes to the limit signs. I would prefer we get with one of our, our house or, or senate guys to see if we can get it amended maybe the next legislative session to encompass all roads so it's not an extreme burden on the county to go out and try to maybe get all the signs and stuff like that. Might do sense.
Right, I, I understand. So, what we're talking about right now is, is, like I said, a housing condition that, you know, we don't currently maintain their streets or roads and if they wanted to do this, they, they would buy the signs and we'd, we'd put them up. But, uh, yeah, I, I can see what you, what you're talking about. I mean, I can't see that the Board of Commissioners would ever approve, um, um, you know, golf carts running up and down, um, you know, one of the, the main paved roads in, in the county. Yeah, it's, well, there's a lot of... Because we wouldn't be able to drop, in good faith, drop the speed limit down to twenty-five or even thirty miles an hour for that matter. Yeah.
I agree. I don't have an issue with it in the housing conditions.
Right. Okay.
And it's the main roads there.
Okay, so, uh...
But I can tell you some of those gas powered golf carts will go twenty-five, thirty miles an hour.
Some of them, they're fifty-five. Yes, sir.
We've tried to catch some.
Okay, so, uh... So, with, with the restrictions of, of those four items, uh... I think it's four that's in it. Let me look at the... Okay, actually, three items. So, the Board of County Commissioners of a county has said, so golf carts can operate if the Board of County Commissioners, uh, has approved the operation of golf cart indoor utility vehicle traffic on roadways within a county and a roadway has been posted a speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour or less, B, the roadway is located in an unincorporated area, and C, appropriate signage cautioning motorists that the possibility of golf carts or utility vehicle traffic is erected by the Board of County Commissioners. So, again, uh, within a, a housing addition that has private roads that has public access, that signage would all be on the responsibility of the HOA to furnish those for us. But, those are the three items that would be required, um, in a petition to the Board of Commissioners to open a road for golf cart traffic, in, in my mind.
I agree.
Okay. So I'm going to put that out as a motion that we implement that currently until, and until we can get that speed limit changed because the sheriff recommended, I think that's good. I did pursue as well.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item nine, discussion and possible action concerning implementing a county employee ID badge system. I've talked with Troy and the sheriff about that. We, I think, Troy, we were kind of looking at waiting on the badge system until we had a, an electronic system to where we get in and out of the courthouse, an access system.
Right.
But I think what we should do is implement a badge system with the RFID chips in them and then as we get an access system further down the road and get that implemented, then we could use those badges for that. But in the meantime, I think it would be good for everyone if all the county employees that access the courthouse were able to have a badge with a little neck bracelet and be able to go in and out. I think that would also help our deputies that help secure our building so they know who is an employee and who isn't, because they have a lot of people jumping the rug there at the metal detector and that sort of thing.
Damon, you can say you have the machine to make these badges?
Yes, sir.
You do?
And I talked with Troy about that and Troy, she wants to be able to make the badges there, but what I would like to do is wait before we buy another badge machine to make sure that it marries up with our access system that we're going to have to make sure that it'll program those RFID chips and that sort of stuff. So until then, I'd like for the, if it's okay with you, Sheriff, for you to work with Troy's office on getting the badges issued out to our county employees. And then that way, our new deputies that guard the doors and won't need to be doing a pat-down of the county commissioners who comes through the door with his firearm.
Yeah. That's good.
That's good. I don't get shot. All right. So.
I'll move with her.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on item nine on the ID system. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our motion passes. Item ten, discussion and possible action on upgrading the courthouse annex and road district telephone system from Sentrex to voice-over IP. I'm supposed to have a young man from ChickSA Telecom.
Yeah, Jeff Sandler.
Hi, Jeff.
I am.
So I've invited Jeff from ChickSA to talk about voice-over IP and their capabilities and that sort of stuff and see where we can go from there.
Yeah.
So Jeff?
There's a lot to it, but just to kind of briefly state that, he contacted me and told me kind of where you are now and it would be much more flexible for you to get upgraded and onto a voice-over IP system. That technology's been around quite a while now. There are several ways that you can do that and it's just a more flexible platform to be on if you were to have buildings that you added, users that you added, users that you didn't need anymore. Also, if you have times where you have a higher call volume based on something that comes up, you can do that without being locked into spending a lot more money all of the time just to be prepared for those times where you have a higher call volume. So we, just to give you a little bit of background on ChickSA Telecom, we're a privately owned company. Our parent company is headquartered in Sulphur. I have an office in Oklahoma City. There's about seven of our companies under that umbrella with a few hundred employees. We've been in business here for over 100 years. We've been in this part of the business for 40, 50 years and we have public entities all over the state that we do business with and we install and service and train for these systems all over the state. We have a dedicated trainer for end-user training, basically everything from beginning to end and, you know, we have our own engineers that do the installations. We don't contract any of that out. So it's a pretty straightforward process if we wanted to get into seeing what we would recommend for you guys to do. I would just give with the person or persons that might have the information on how many users you have now, what you have or would like to have the ability to do, and then within a couple of weeks, we could put together some options for you and you, you know, and you would have, you would have an opportunity to see what was out there available.
Well, unfortunately, the person that has gathered all that information in the past isn't here today, but we can certainly make that information available to you. I'd also like to point out that they handle the telephone system, the VoIP system in the sheriff's office over there. They can pretty well recommend it from Damon's group over there, so they do a good job there as well. But yeah, I appreciate you coming by.
Sure. What kind of cost are we talking about?
It all depends on what we do.
It's really, it's really hard to say. It's really hard to say without knowing how many users you have. You might have to. I could give you a simple, preliminary idea.
If it's a state contract?
Yeah.
Not so much, but if it's not, then yes. This is kind of a option two from what we had talked about previously on the new phone system in the county. Talking with Troy, it seems that the people we had talked to before have been dragging their feet and they've been having some issues and Troy recommended maybe we look at something else. So this is the first steps toward that, looking at something else. But I agree with you, Monty, if we need to bid it out, we'll certainly take those actions to do that.
What kind of transition process would it be, Monty? How long would it take for us to transition from that?
Not very long. I mean, you know, if you got to a point where you approved a solution, and again, it depends on how many buildings and users you have, but at the most, a couple of weeks and we can do that cut over in phases. In other words, we could do a building, train those users, you know, whatever training we needed to do. And you could do those cutovers after hours so that you wouldn't have any downtime during the actual hours the publics might call you and so forth.
That's what I was concerned about, downtime.
So at the most, if you had several locations and we wanted to do it slowly and after hours, you could spend, you know, you might do this and then another weekend or after hours you might cut over another location, so over the period of a couple of weeks. And, but most of the work we would do in the background while your current system's working, just to program it how you wanted it to work, because whenever you replace this, I will advise you to think about what you would like to have, because whenever we replace a system, we're going to have to program the system to do what you want to do anyway. So at that time, it really doesn't cost you anything more to say, well, I would also like it to do this, this, and this. So if there's a time where you say, I wish our call flow went another way or whether it's how the hunt groups go around the county or whatever it might be, that's a great opportunity to not spend a lot of money and get what you want. So, yeah. But it would take long.
I just want the telephone to ring.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I really don't want it to ring. The thing is, ring, I want it to.
I want it to ring somewhere else. So the item is discussion and possible action on upgrading the courthouse system. Monty, I think it may be a little premature to decide on the upgrade, but I would like to take an action to engage ChickSA Telecom to give us an idea, a technical solution and an idea on what it would cost if we went with them. And in that also to pursue whether or not we would need to bid this, whether it'd be on state contract, you know, what type of a purchasing implement would we have?
So was that a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll say.
It's a long-winded motion. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our motion approved. All right. Item 11, discussion and possible action on establishing an official email system. This kind of goes into this voice-over IP system. So once we have that, we, one of the things that came up when, as we change offices and, I mean, we've changed assessors, we've changed the county commissioner now, and what happens is, is all of the history, all the emails go away because they're on private email servers and they just get deleted or they're no longer accessible to the public. And those are actually public records. And so if there's actual business being transacted via email, then those need to be archived and recorded. So one of the things that I talked again with Troy about is the ability for us to use our domain name that we have with our website and establish email accounts with that. There are several ways to do that. I would recommend that we outsource that and let someone else handle the email system for us, but it would be, again, it would be accessible. When we get open records requests and things like that, it would be much easier to be able to go to the official email system to do that with. One of the other things that that helps us tie into the voice-over IP system is a text, a voice-to-text and text systems that ties, that would tie into that email system as well. So you could get emails, you get a text.
Your voice goes through email.
Right. Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. Thank you, sir. But anyway, this is something that I would think that we would want to establish as, you know, our official records for the county in the future.
I don't have a problem. Monty's big on email, you know that.
Yeah. Yeah, he is.
He ain't thought of it.
So this action is to establish an official county email system and.
I'll move you.
Okay. I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our motion is passed unanimously. All right. Item 12, discussion and possible action concerning reconsideration and renegotiation of the city of Guthrie's request, contract with Logan County Emergency Management Office to provide limited emergency management services of the city. It seems that last time I was a little bit quick on the trigger. I had talked with Troy and she said that she had not received anything from the city. I took that as meaning that they just had not wanted to do anything. Well, that wasn't quite the case. I mean, anytime you assume something, all the risks go along with that assumption. So what had happened was both were waiting on the other to put it in the right format and get it to the board. So with that, Troy picked up and the sheriff picked up the issue again, went to the city and we now have this contract to review and possibly approve. The changes that were made here is the funding agreement is a little bit higher than it was before. The city is going to allow us to, out of the first quarter's payment, to assume possession of the radio systems and that sort of stuff that they have provided in the past. The radio systems are older and you can't buy them anymore and that sort of stuff. So the first quarter's payment, we're going to, we would waive in lieu of us accepting that equipment as our property in the future. And then every quarter, we would have $3,875 from the city as payment for services. Those services, again, are outlined in.
What's on here? It says that it'd be $15,500 divided into four equal installments.
Right.
I was thinking they raised that up to 16. I was thinking 16 was what we'd do to an even number.
Well, that's what I thought too and Troy came back and said, no, that's, the city said 15.5 and change, you know, 15.5 was as much as they would do right now. And, you know, the.
Well, I would recommend we approve it. I mean, we're halfway through the year anyway.
Right.
And it's privileged enough to take advantage of.
Back up again in June.
Saving the taxpayer money.
A second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve said contract for mutual aid. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our motion is approved. All right. Item 13, discussion and possible action concerning Sooner Fire Department Board of Directors member appointment. Sheriff, you'd like to?
Yes, I'd like to speak. My name is Jeff Ward, Fire Department over at Sooner. I'd like to speak on John Rainbow's behalf. Rainbow is actually a landowner in our district, is on the fire department, is one of my captains. I think Rainbow did the choice as a board member for us. He's been sitting in on our board meetings for the past year, just trying to get a hang of how things run and is just outstanding person in general. So I would just like to speak on his behalf as that spot. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity.
Thank you for showing up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here. So we got the two applicants, John Rainbow and Bobby Anderson. I've read both of them. They both look like good candidates. Cody, this is in your area over there. What's your thoughts on it?
Being that he's a current member on Sooner and he's an officer on Sooner, I think it'd be wise for John Rainbow to be the selection for the board. I think he has a lot of knowledge of what's going on with the department and in the district. He does live in the area pretty close by. How long has he been on Sooner?
He's been with us going three, I believe.
Three years?
Yes.
So is that a motion?
I make a motion to accept John Rainbow.
Okay.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of John Rainbow being the next board member, say aye.
Aye.
Our motion passes unanimously. Thanks, sir.
I really appreciate you guys.
Okay. Item 14, well, before we get to the admin stuff, let's jump to the addendum. Discussion and possible action to award bid number 2021-17 for one 600-gallon skid unit for Marshall Fire Department, tabled from January 15th, 2021. Do we have anybody here from Marshall?
We have an email from Marshall Fire Department recommending that Chief Fire and Safety for the lowest and thus did.
I'll move with her. I'll say.
I remember it from last time. I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our motion passes unanimously. All right. Item 14, discussion and possible action on resolution appointing requisitioning officers for various accounts. This is when it gets real boring, ladies and gentlemen, because we get into assignment and a bunch of stuff.
Grab it down there.
Grab it down there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Requisitioning officers approved. Discussion and possible action on resolution appointing receiving officers for various accounts. Do you have any? Do you have any tricks?
Yeah, here's the gentleman. Sorry.
Sometimes we have none and she tells us that and we go, whoa.
I'm going to hold the answer.
Did you give it to the answer?
I'll move with her.
I have a motion to approve.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 15 passes unanimously. Item 16, discussion and possible action on consent agenda. Payroll things.
Sweet, thank you. That's what my wife's been waiting for.
What was that, sir?
That's what my wife's been waiting for.
So, while we're up to signing our lives away, David, is there anything from the emergency management side that you'd like to give us an update as far as the brush removal of emergencies and that sort of stuff?
Sure. I submitted our RPA for FEMA, our request for public assistance, it's the next step. I didn't need you guys to sign anything, I was able to submit that on my own. So, that's been forwarded to the state. And I just still encourage you guys to keep tracking your expenses that's related to those events. I reached out to the state. There is a possibility that we could go out and get a contractor. One of the things that Mike Teague called me the other day, we would just, again, he reemphasized, we need to go out for bids on a big level, like through the Daily Oklahoma or the Tulsa World, make sure we cover all of our bases on that end. He's gonna try to find an old bid that another county may have used in the past for our reference. And we also said that he'd be willing before we actually sent those bids out for OEM to review them or send them to FEMA to let them review if we wanted to do that, just to help cover those bases so we find out later if we may have done something wrong.
So, I guess, I'm a little bit confused there.
Yes, sir.
The county has, there are statutes that the county follows for purchasing. So, is he saying that we need to follow something different than the statute?
We have to be a little more stringent. Yeah, we can't, so like for our bidding stuff, we just can't send it to the Guthrie News leader, our local. It's gotta go more, for FEMA's reference, it's gotta go more, so it's minorities, women, businesses, different things, has to be, to show that we did it on a bigger level, not just through the Guthrie News leader. And what we do now may work, I mean, what Troy does now, it might take care of all of those. I just would hate to go out and do something, we get a contractor, and then FEMA come back and say, oh, you didn't do this, so we're not gonna help you, that's the way you guys decided you wanted to do.
I guess, before we accept something from a state agency like that, we publish it, make sure we run it through our legal channels.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we don't want to get through local to double check, it just, we just wanna make sure all of our bases are covered.
Because counties are subordinate and a part of the state. We are actually a part of the state, and our, we don't make up rules, regulations, we follow state laws. And so, the state contracting laws are just that, and so...
Yeah, so then, there's a possibility to do that. I would say yesterday, in conjunction with a whole bunch of people working as a team, the county health department did the second vaccination deal at the health department. I was kinda told it was around 850, give or take, where it was ran through yesterday. And again, it's a huge team effort. Damon was there, his guys was there, Don Swager, the Guthrie Police Chief, his guys were there, lots of folks in the health department, I was there. It's a total group effort. If people want the vaccine, they have to go to vaccinate.Oklahoma.gov and sign up. It's the state system, the state health department system, it's just the way that it has to go. I was looking through our numbers through yesterday, since all of this started for Logan County, according to the state health department, we've had 3,173 cases. Of those, 2,775 are considered recovered, leaving 398 active cases in Logan County. And then we've had 15 deaths that have been, however, the state health department relates those back to Logan County, but that's kinda what's going on. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Let me see the stamp down there.
What about the stamp, Ed?
Oh, they stamped the very bottom of it, I just signed it for a while. Hey, Dave, what about these people who don't have a computer, access to log on to their website to register?
I believe what I was told yesterday, if you don't have a computer, you have no way of accessing it, I believe if you call 211, they are supposed to be set up to help you access it, to get registered. But I would encourage people, if they don't have a computer, maybe they could reach out to another family member, grandson, granddaughter, maybe somebody from their church, to maybe try to help them. Again, they need your, I believe they'll need like your birth date, and it's not, I believe they'd ask for a social security number, anything like that, but you do have to have your birth date. Right now, they're in phase two, which is 65 and over, first responders and healthcare workers, is what they're working towards vaccinating at this time.
I'd discourage everyone else gets vaccinated, I don't need to.
Do we have a number of how many people currently vaccinated in Logan?
About 1,600.
Well, if we base off of what the health department has done the last two Thursdays, about 1,600, but that's open to, anybody can sign, if you sign up and you get an email to go, you can go wherever, so I can't tell you, of those approximately 1,600, 1,400 were Logan County residents, because you can, I mean, I had people yesterday...
That was a lot of out of town.
Yeah. I didn't recognize as many people yesterday as I did last week. But the state health department isn't, wherever you can find a place to go, you can go. I mean, I know yesterday, there were several people talked about coming from Upper City and coming from Yukon and...
These two are just the chair signs.
And I know, I've had people locally say they went to Fairview because that was the first place that they could get it, or they went to Lincoln County, or they went to Ardmore. I heard somebody say they went to Ardmore. I know the health department is working as fast as they can to try to get as many people through. It is, it's not easy getting 850 people through to get their vaccination, because the majority of those are over 65. A lot of those are on walkers, oxygen, wheelchairs, and I pushed quite a few people the last two days just in wheelchairs, but we've been very, very blessed so far. We've not had any issues, no, we have not had to call an ambulance or anything, so rather people, if they are able to get an appointment and come, take their time, we'll walk with them and get them safely in the building and safely back to their car. You do, I just would, I guess, reemphasize, you have to have an appointment to get the vaccine, you cannot just show up without an appointment and try and get it, because they have turned people away before.
From an extension side, you know, our building's kinda in the middle of it, and it seems to be running pretty smoothly. We don't have any complaints.
We get a lot, you know, the people that have come out, a lot of compliments on how easy the process was and how it flows really well, and, you know, of course, at Tadler Park, we can kinda stage people in and bring them in, and it works, works well.
I just like a well-oiled machine. I came at seven last Thursday, so I was afraid I wasn't getting it to park, but it was kinda...
Yeah, we try to keep the cars off you guys.
Well, you're, I mean, you're in and out and out of there, I mean...
Yeah, pretty quick.
The last two events, from the time you walk in the front door to you get back to your car, is about 45 minutes, give or take. And they've been trying to social distance as best they can. I knew yesterday, when we were cleaning up, the health department folks, I mean, they had Corox wipes wipe down every chair, every table. They're trying to keep it as clean as possible, and they're taking temperature checks.
Mr. Fair, I'll move to approve the consent agenda items.
A second.
I have a motion and a second on consent agenda, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Discussion of possible action on proving claims for payment for January 2021. While we're in the middle of that, we had talked about speaking with the DEQ folks on getting authorization to burn without an air curtain, any, if you had the time to...
I haven't been able to get anything else. Reach out to her again and see if she can try to come maybe to the next meeting, January, plus January.
If she can, let me know, and I'll put her on the agenda.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. I know Monty always looks forward to having folks from DEQ here.
Yeah. I believe so.
I have muscle on it.
I got broken, they already got me. I know we got it.
I would say sugar high, but he's so into it.
You're talking about, you're sugar, see how that works? I have a motion and a second on approving the claims. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 18, discussion of possible action on proving purchase card payments for January
I'll move you to approve.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on item 18? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, on to item 19. Any citizen desiring to be heard? At this time, I'd also like to recognize Don here, our president of Oklahoma Second Amendment Association, in our meeting here, Don Spencer.
Do I throw in a shot when I walk in?
No, no, not at all. You've been, you're always welcome here. Being a county resident, you know, it doesn't surprise me to see you walk in the door.
I would like to say it's pleasant to actually see a smooth functioning government take place without bickering and some of the previous problems that we've seen. And so, gentlemen, I wanna thank you for starting this off right for this year, because we're gonna have an incredible year with situations, we don't know what's gonna even be in front of us. So, for us to be together as much as possible, I sure appreciate your cooperation on it, and your stance for liberty this morning, which is why I was here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other citizens desiring to be heard? Hearing now, on to item 20, comments, announcements, questions by the county commissioners.
I don't have anything at this time. Just trying to get in the groove of things, paying off those Mack trucks that we've got over there, so getting those paid off and try to get going. Appreciate everything.
I have nothing else from the board other than, you know, if we can get that lady from DEQ to come in and talk to us about getting...
The air curtain?
Yeah, the air curtain. We're gonna burn with that one. Bobby, you had something?
Yeah, Bobby Kench with CEC Engineering, Oklahoma City. We do your bridge inspections, and I would like to request, if at all possible, to meet with you guys, I believe in your next county commissioner meeting on the 29th of January, to present you with those, the updated bridge inspection reports, and to take a moment after the meeting, while we're all together, to do a brief rundown on it.
So, you need to be on the agenda to talk about the bridge inspections?
Not necessarily, I'm just requesting if we, since we're all three in the vicinity, if we could brief you on your updates on your bridge inspections.
One, we gotta, need to do it in a panel meeting or individually?
Individually, after the meeting.
Okay.
If that'll work.
Anything else?
That would be it.
Entertained, item 21.
I'll move.
I'll second.
We're adjourned.